Good evening, 6:00 PM. Your name, I pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to number three, take a look at the agenda. If there's any changes, modifications before we approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to number four, all the mandatory views if needed. I don't think we have any, so we'll move on to number five. Approve minutes from November 7th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 7.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Moving on, approve minutes from November 9th, special meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 9th special meeting.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to number seven, public input.
I have public input. My name is Vicki Larson. I want to reiterate something that was discussed in a meeting I was not present at. I am the author of A Voice From The Gallery. It is my opinion, and if anybody has a problem with it, they contact me. Don't jump all over the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public input? If not, moving on to number eight. We're a little early, so we may have to come back. If that's okay. Because that is scheduled for 6:15, the public hearing on the Phase One Sanitary Sewer Collection System improvements. 6:30 is the public hearing for the variance request for 301 Lincoln Drive. That's me. I suppose we have to wait until 6:30, right? So I'll have to come back to that as well. Moving on to number 10, finance office. Approve to, motion to approve application for abatement of tax, tax, property taxes for 505 Offsted Street and 204 Offsted and 103 West Second Street.
I'll make the motion to approve applicants for abatement of property taxes for 505 Offsted Street, 204 Offsted and 103 West Second Street.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 10B, motion to approve payment of taxes still due on properties 505 Offsted, 204 Offsted and 103 West Second Street after abatement in an amount of $321.64.
Just have to make a motion.
Just make a motion. It's specified what fund it comes out of.
I'll make-
You said general fund?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve payment of taxes still due on properties 505 Offsted, 204 Offsted and 103 West Second after abatement in an amount of $321.64 to come out of the general fund.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 10C, motion to approve purchase of Banyan software for their proposal to include the UV Light software, UV Light Online Pay Module and annual support cost for $4,010. We did talk about this last meeting, we took a couple things out. Just, we did not need them, so.
And they didn't confirm if we ever do need those pieces that can be purchased without any issues.
I'll make a motion to approve purchasing Banyan software for their proposal to include UV Light software, UV Light Online Pay Module and the annual support cost for $4,010.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 10D, motion to approve purchase discounted Banyan software for fund accounting software for $3,196 and payroll software for $1,836 through South Dakota Municipal League Discount Program.
I'll make a motion to approve purchase discounted Banyan software for fund accounting software for $3,196 and payroll software for $1,836 through the South Dakota Municipal League Discount Program.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 10E, motion to approve sponsorship of Union County Fair 2024.
Does some of we do yearly during the-
Yeah, we usually do it every year. I just haven't, around the fall of the year. We usually don't get it this early.
What level do we normally do?
That's what I was gonna look, because I think that's new, kind of.
I couldn't find anything specifying-
Yeah, I can't remember, I don't think they give levels. That's what I gotta look.
Do we have until June 15th to get it in? So if we want, bottom of the letter, the sponsorships are due June 15th.
Oh, okay.
So if we wanna leave then-
Why don't we wait and see what, maybe we can find what we've given in the past.
And then add the monetary value?
Yeah.
Table it?
Yeah.
So 10E will be tabled?
If you can't, if you can't find it, I could call.
Moving on to 10F, motion to approve donation to the Elsister Hudson High School After Prom 2024.
I didn't find anything specific, so I didn't know if you wanted to-
Who requested it?
Uh, it was the after-student parents group that sent the letter.
Was it a mountain?
It isn't a specific request, it's just, it's a general donation request letter that they sent out to all the businesses.
Just see if they can get it.
In the past, they've given passes to, like, for the golf course-
I was wondering if they wanted, like, things.
It didn't, doesn't matter, I wrote the letter, but it doesn't matter. Money, it could be passes or Elsister bucket, whatever you guys wanna do.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Was there a deadline for it?
It does not have a deadline, prom's in April.
Let's just table it so we can discuss it until the next meeting.
All right. Moving on to 11, wastewater treatment plant. Motion to approve change order five.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number five to the wastewater treatment plant.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? If not, what's up?
Things are kind of, at the meeting, where I was at, Dave was there, things are just kind of going into the winter lull. They're still waiting for a couple big parts, the way it sounded. So, um, so they said this change order was kind of a give and a take, but there is, it's gonna probably be a little bit more, just because prices are kind of-
All right, any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to city utilities, notice of price increase at Elkie Gale landfill.
So that's a letter I got from them. It was more of just a notification that the base prices for the landfill that we use, we run space from, or however that's word. They're raising their rates, $2 a ton for solid waste. So I'm guessing Lauren Fisher, in turn, will be increasing that starting in January. Informational piece there.
Thank you, Dave. Also, 12B, Lauren Fisher contract is expiration. So that'll be coming up.
And that's another thing, I didn't realize that we were on a three-year contract with them, and his contract expires at the end of December. Looking back, when we've done advertising for bids for that, we missed the window to open it up for bids. So I did send him the updated contract that you have in front, in front of you for renewal. I have not heard back from him yet, so I'll give until, you know, kind of into that first week of December.
And if I remember right, I think we put it up for maybe before, but we didn't get anybody else. This was kind of our choice.
Yeah, when I researched it, I could only find there was one other person that had reached out, that they were closer to Sioux Falls.
Is this, um, this is a different item, this recycle collection license? Is that something different?
It's garbage, it's the copy of the license agreement that we sent him.
Oh, okay, because I know we've tried to do recycling before and it didn't pass.
It was just the generic contract that they did previously, and it had recyclables on it.
So we don't know if it's a win out, win out for anything?
He has not, that's part of the contract, is his prices. His proposed rate schedule towards the bottom of the first page.
No, we're not voting, maybe he already sent the application.
Oh, okay.
So once I get that back, I'll update everyone and let everybody know.
Any other discussion in regards to that, or not? Well, it's 6:13, you wanna start with legal updates on Austin, or should we go back to? You wanna go through that, that'd be fine.
Yep, legal updates versus properties, Jeff and I spoke pretty clear about it. Obviously, the big nuisance that's gonna be coming up are any properties. You know, there's one property, we'll be the owner until the end of the year. To my understanding, there's been no progress on that specific property, so we'll leave it to the city council as to what we would like to do with specific property. Additionally, the big one is gonna be snow removal that's coming up. Typically, the lady Jeff operates as to kind of a daily nuisance, so you know, people are scooping the snow, things of that variety. He comes, or he essentially gets somebody to do the co-work, and then it's assessed against the property itself. That's one way we could also discuss potentially trying to hire that out and put a bid process in and see if somebody would like to put bids in before that. That's really the only nuisance updates I have. Additionally, for B, we'll need a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance 2023-07. That's the amendment to the speed regulations that add the speed limit in the trade little kid. And then there were some other minor changes to it, just wording because of, do you remember the ordinance? If they, it had any here above, well then there were emission speed ordinances behind it. They're covering it, so we'll strike off some of that later. I forget if it made sense.
So we either need to make a motion on it, or discuss the order, if we're gonna discuss it, we better go back to...
The one with the ordinance or the nuisance?
The ordinance.
The ordinance, yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 2023-07, an ordinance of the City of Elsister, South Dakota by amending Chapter 7.04 Speed Restrictions -2014 Revised Elsister Municipal Ordinances of the City of Elsister, South Dakota.
I'll second it. Clarification on that, is it 2023-09 or 07? Because the handout says 09, the agenda says 07.
It is 09 in the moment.
It's 09, okay. That's right, we had that numbering issue.
So can I just same, just amend it to 07? I will just amend the same motion instead of 2023-07 to 2023-09.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We have to go back to the public hearing at 6:15 on the Phase One Sanitary Sewer Collection System improvements. So, Tony or Harley, if you both like to speak on it.
Does everybody have the handout that was sent, or does anybody need one? We've got copies with, if anybody does. I'll go ahead and get started. So, this project background, this collection system Phase One improvements was part of the 2020 Facility Plan that was completed at the same time the facility plan was completed, the wastewater treatment facility improvements. The city had secured project funding for it. When the wastewater treatment plant project came in overbid and costs were high, that funding was diverted to the treatment plant, because at that time that was deemed to be a higher priority. The city is looking at possibly going forward with the project, dependent on funding. And so there's some loan and grant funding that can be applied for, and so this public hearing is part of that funding preparation process. And so you should have a handout in front of you tonight that shows the, kind of the area work that will be completed. It's the one that's got the orange and the yellow highlights on it. And so, this Phase One includes the sanitary sewer that's on the orange area. And so this is 1939 installed vitrified clay pipe that is aging and deteriorating. It's in need of replacement or rehabilitation. In addition, the entire sanitary sewer system needs to be televised to evaluate its condition and if any improvements are needed. And so we have both of those in this project. And so to just be specific, if the public does not have a map what streets those are, it is Offsted Street from First Street to Sixth Street on the west end of town. It's the alley between Offsted and Union Street from First to Sixth on the west end of town. And then the next alleyway over between Union and Broad Street, again from First to Sixth Street. And then it includes First Street as well from Offsted back to just east of Iowa Street. So that's kind of the area included. Three alternatives were looked at in evaluating costs for these. The state always requires us to look at a no-action alternative. Obviously, in this case, with the age of the sewer and its condition, to try to be able to maintain it while it's still in decent enough condition that the lining option could be considered, we recommend the city not pursue that at this time, that it's time to start before it gets, you know, 100 years old and risk of any collapse, it's time to get in and get it maintained and rehabilitated. The other two options looked at was curative place pipe rehabilitation, and that's where they take a felt tube, and it's impregnated with resin, and they insert that into the pipe, kind of, you see, if you take a sock and you turn it inside out and you impregnate it with resin, you stick it in the pipe, and they pull it back out. It's kind of inverted, and then it's heat cured with steam. And that heat steam process, under pressure, pushes that tube out, and it cures hard against the existing pipe. So you're basically creating a new hard resin pipe inside that old pipe as a method of rehabilitation. It's a trenchless technology, so you don't have to dig, they go and enter at the manholes and repair the sewer that way. So the estimated project cost for doing the improvements with curative place pipe rehabilitation is $2,825,000. Alternative three, looked at repairing the sewer with open cut construction. So that's where they actually would, you know, excavate a portion of the street, move the asphalt, dig down, remove the pipe, replace the pipe, and then bury it back up and replace the street. The SRF funding program, when it's a sewer project, allows for half the street to be replaced. So that's what's included in these costs. I just wanna make sure we're clear with the city that it's not the whole street, just half the street. The cost for that is $3,777,000. And-
$3,001,000?
$3,777,000. And so during the kind of evaluation process, the city indicated that they were possibly interested in redoing the streets in that area. And so they wanted to pursue at this time the open cut option to give it most flexibility. And so that is what the funding package has been written for and is being requested. If you go to the second page, and it might be on the back page of your handout, there's a table in there, and it shows the opinion of construction cost at a little over $3 million. The engineering design bid and construction phase services would be $505,000. We have some costs in there in case geotechnical evaluation is needed for $5,000. And then, project administration and legal services, which is the legal and bond fees to execute the loan and, and I think it's a project. So that's how we arrived at the $3,777,000 loan. I don't know, Harley, if you wanna go through the payments and the cost increase or the rate increase? If you want me to do that?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay. So like, yeah, like Kenya said, the total project cost is about $3.7 million. I gave you a handout that shows kind of your impact on the rate. So for, assuming worst-case scenario, 100% loan at $3.7 million for the project, the projected utility rate impact would be about $49.29. And that's annual payments of $210,256.44. And what this public hearing is doing as well is we're gonna help the city apply for CDBG funds. So that is a grant of about $2,020,000. So that would bring your rate down a little bit if you were to secure the grant funding, which we're gonna apply for in April of next year. But we're getting ahead with the public hearing in case, you know, this public hearing here is for public comment, and I take, you know, the notes and stuff, if anybody has any comments, and they can provide those to me as well. So, the rate impact with the loan, or with the grant, the loan would drop down to about $1.7 million, 570,000. And it'd be about $22.93 for that rate impact. And so those are just drafts, and this public hearing is to approve, you know, the- And with the CDBG program, it works to ensure decent affordable housing to provide services to the most vulnerable in your population or in your, in your communities, and to create jobs through the expansion and retention of jobs. So, again, Elsister is eligible for CDBG funding. You're about 51.25% of your residents are determined low to moderate income. And so I know you guys are interested possibly in redoing the collection system improvement project. And so in that handout, there was just kind of like a list of goals and stuff that we kind of- comprehensive plan to help, for community development, housing needs assessment. And so I can kind of go over those real quickly. So, design lots and blocks to emphasize cost efficiency and community value, which comes from a comprehensive plan. Discourage scattered residential, commercial, and industrial development. Invest in purchase of governor's homes to give homeownership to low moderate families. Enhance the character, identity, and historical preservation of the community. Participate in the pre-disaster mitigation plan process to identify possible activities to mitigate the loss of life and property in the event of a disaster. And then improve in, like, your parks and recreation. Maintain the appearance of Elsister's neighborhood, straits, and commercial districts. So there's just a few goals here, applying for the CDBG funds for the collection system project. You know, looking for eligible funding for, through self-putting housing for low-income moderate families. And I know the City of Elsister did do a housing study, so, you know, working with economic development persons to kind of, you know, follow some of those findings and recommendations that they had. Worked to complete the ongoing wastewater treatment facility project and prioritize applying for funding to improve the public pool, and so that one was kind of a new one that came up too, so.
So can you only do one of these?
No, it's kind of like, these are like your priorities and stuff, and, you know, there's some stuff that, you know, the CVG program can, you can apply for under them. For the pool and stuff, you can do game fishing parks. They do a land water conservation fund, that's usually due around April, and that they help with. I think that one's a 50/50 match for funding, grant funding. For a pool or anything like that, upgrade.
Because our pool is open too. It's got issues.
Have you looked at the CBDG website? If you do, it's really nicely laid out, you can read everything really easy. I was looking at it for the other building for what we're looking into, to see if we could apply for any grants and-
Yeah, the-
Very easily accessible.
The funding that you could apply for was like $700,000, but they increased it to $2 million. So that will be effect, it was, went into effect in October, but it'll still be in effect in April. So when we, when you guys wanna apply for that.
How about grants for a lift station?
That would go through D A and R. And how that works is, sometimes they have what's called a community facility grant, and it's, it's based off of the board decision, but it kind of goes into the population, and then if your water rates or sewer rates are above 55, sometimes you get a percentage of that facility grant. But ultimately, that's the board's decision. So if you wanted to do a lift station now, you have to get that on the state water plan, and- Is that included in the facility plan? We did not look at a lift station in the facility plan. No. So it would, could be amended into the facility plan? Where is it located at?
We need one, we don't have one right now.
Well, that, and that's why I asked, but if you, unless there's a low spot where you have to pump sewer from where, you know, to develop a certain property, and then it has to pump it in the main one, that'd be the only reason you need it.
Well, this would be property north of town, like north of the golf course, and it's lower down there.
Yep, if that would develop, yep.
And it could do, serve two purposes. For one thing, we have property out there that's for industrial, you know, someday if we have some business come to town. Plus, maybe possibly develop a land north of the golf course. Seems like a lot of people like to build some nice homes along those. But whether we could have the money to do something like that is-
If I may speak? Vicki Larson again. Some years ago, they discussed the lift station when the meatpacking place was there. And I went out and I did some research on lift stations, and at that time, they were running $250,000 to $300,000. And you have to also attach an electrical, it has to be wired electrically for cautionary, bells and whistles kind of thing, for safety and stuff. But that's what it was back in those days, and, and there is, in particularly on the north end- And, and there, there is on, in particularly on the north end, there is a, there is a definite need for that. And like I said, I had done some research, just, you know, it, 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 huh, kind of even then, and I don't know if, if that would, you know, if, if we could get any assistance on that.
Hudson just put one in, didn't he? We were talking about that. What was, what was the cost on that, do you remember?
I think about a million, wasn't it, Harley?
Like, the cost for lift stations have really gone up, and I mean, it really depends on size, but it, it, it's pretty easy to get to a million.
That's right.
Nowadays. The one thing with the SRF funding program and kind of CDBG that we're talking about for SRF, the, SRF will allow funding for sewer of expansions. So if you're going to basically go out and develop an undeveloped area, the state will let you borrow money through the SRF program to do that for sewer. They won't for water. I don't know why, nobody even at the state, we joked about that, how nobody knows why. It's lost, we're, it's been set up that way, but, so, so that would be a great opportunity or possibility if that development is to go forward, to use that program. But for water, you probably want to find a different way to fund it.
That would be through probably EDA or LIP, G O D, depending on what LIP and G, EDA like to see is like fifty jobs being created, so like those are a little bit bigger. Maybe not necessarily LIP, they might want to see like ten, twenty jobs. But they want to see like, in those like light industrial park areas, like businesses are like committed to being there. So you have to have a letter of commitment and, and stuff like that. So they would be able to develop, you know, that, that road and IP could be another one, South Dakota Industrial Park DOT, that could be another one too. So those are some options as well. There's options out there, and it just has to align with their requirements, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But there's no other questions?
I do have a question, because we paid, or not for you, Harley, for Tanya. Tanya, we paid the, I don't even remember how much it was, to have the reevaluation of the pipes done when we wanted to reapply for this, right? And so they went in to do the, to look at the pipes again on that side, a couple months ago.
To get the new projected cost, they didn't go back inside again, did they?
No, no televising was done. We included the cost to have the entire sewers and televised and cleaned. And really, you should try to have that done about every five years, and it's been a while. And so it will just, it'd be good to have that done as part of this project. The other thing, I know, talking with Lani the other day as well, there's been a couple years in town with some root issues. And so it may even happen that if that televising can be done kind of in the early part of design, if something would come up, you know, and another part of the city would appear to have a defect or, you know, some kind of need for rehabilitation, either we could see if that part could be, you know, incorporated into the project, or if the money could be shifted, we could, you know, maybe not do part of one of these streets and shift it over to another area if there's a need that's immediate that needs to be repaired.
So they talked about the cost of each resident. Is this for a specific period of time? I assume it is. You can't expand that any further, so it'll be cheaper?
No, the maximum loan that D A and R allows the SRF program is thirty years. And so it is a thirty-year term on it. So, and I think the idea there is that, you know, often you do these repairs, and while the pipe likely will last longer than thirty years, it's just, it's hard to burden the city with debt for a longer period than that. The only other program I know that has a longer period is rural development, will do like a forty-year loan. But the SRF program through this application process is not.
I guess my main concern is our water's pretty high the way it is, and I, so there's some people in town that really can't afford to have it go much more out than you.
Well, ideally, we could get some funding so that it wouldn't be that full forty-nine increase. I mean, wouldn't say it would be twenty-two would be kind of best-case scenario.
And I think the idea right now is if the city is interested in pursuing the project, apply. See what funding package you get. You're not deciding tonight to take the funding package and proceed with the project. You're deciding to approve, requesting the, the funding. And so you can make a determination if you want to move forward when you get the loan amount and see what the package is.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Thanks, Tanya.
Thank you.
Thank Harley. Any other discussion in regards to it? If not, we can move on to, unless you would like to make a motion on, on that, that, I don't, we don't have to decide tonight that there is a motion on that in case.
So they can go ahead and pursue it without a motion, correct?
No, they cannot. We need to make a motion.
Apply for it?
This is just to apply for it, right?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to go into Phase One Sanitary Collection System Improvements. Would that be right?
No, make a motion, yeah, make a motion.
To apply for it?
To authorize, to make a motion to approve exploration into public funding for Phase One Sanitary Sewer Collection System Improvements.
Motion to approve, what was that?
Oh, what did I say?
Public funding?
For...
I made a motion to approve exploring funding?
Okay. That was what I...
Well, technically, it's to apply, a motion to apply for public funding. And then they'll give us the vet package, and then you make a determination if you move forward or not.
Motion to apply for a public funding for the collection system improvements.
Yeah, do we, do we need to specify the specific, do we don't need to, to your knowledge, do we need to specify CDBG or?
Um, yes.
Okay.
With CDBG.
Is it just CDBG or is it also?
State revolving loan funding for D A and R.
So those two.
So I'll try this. I'll make a motion to approve application of sanitary sewer collection system improvements. With banner? West of them, those guys are... With banner for CDBG funding and state revolving loan. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
A vote? Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on to the six-thirty PM public hearing, variance request for address three oh one Lincoln Drive. So it's in, it's in the handout. Whoever would like to speak on it, go for it and guess. Kind of explain to the council if you're wanting to do.
I'll put up a garage.
Will that be attached to your house?
No. I can't put a car garage up. There wouldn't be enough room for that.
I'm Bo Boyer, the contractor for B plus P Construction that will be constructing the new garage. Basically, it's, it'd be a twenty-four by twenty-eight garage, double stall garage. It'll be non, not attached. It'll be kind of located right behind the house. The problem we're having is property lines and variance setbacks for the property. So I think they called the city and they said it was like twenty-five feet from the property line or something. And there's probably not going to be enough space for it back there if, if that's the case.
From the rear of the lot?
I think the side lot, the side of it.
To the south of me.
Yeah, we just changed it to set at oh...
Seven feet?
Seven, yeah, we just changed that at least two minutes ago. Do you know how close it's going to be to that?
It'll be quite a ways from seven feet from our house.
I guess where's the property? Do you know where, where the property line is on that?
The property line's only about five or six feet.
Is it past the driveway or?
To the south of the driveway. And it goes back to where that little, that shed is, just to the right of that, or to the south of that, which I want to tear that out and put them two trees on it.
Yep.
Get rid of that stuff when I get to the garage.
Yep.
Volunteer trees in it all. And I want to move my...
The other shed back.
Huh?
You want to move one of them, right?
I want to move that shed back.
Yep.
The one that we used up by the driveway.
I guess we, we definitely need to know definite rear and side setbacks. So wherever you decide to put the garage, we'd need to know, I mean, if you're asking for a variance, we'd have to know definite footage of, you know, the rear and, and the sides.
So, okay, so you need like exactly where the garage is going to be staked out at?
Correct, from the property line.
So we know definitely that you may need variance, it'd be how much of the variance it's going to be.
Yep. And then we'll have to come back to another meeting to get it approved, basically?
Correct, yep.
Unless it's within the new guidelines that we changed it to. So that might solve it too, because we went from twenty-five to one seven, so...
So it's tougher from the back, or the rear and the side?
No, the rear is fifteen.
Rear is fifteen?
Okay.
Well, you have no problem with the rear, do you?
Shouldn't have no problem with the rear, but it'd be the side would, would be the issue.
Yeah, let us know when.
That's seven foot, that's pretty plain.
I mean, if it's, if it's more than seven feet from that line, I don't know if it is, then you already need a variance where, okay?
By the line, you mean, or the house?
By the property line.
By the property line. That property line is...
Okay, thank you.
Four or five feet just south of my driveway.
Yeah, so essentially, once you find that out, let us know, and then we can get that done.
If we need another variance, we'll get that lined up.
Yes.
Any other comments, discussions in regards to this? Or if not, thank you, and just update, know, or if somebody knows. All right, moving on, we'll go back to the other side of the page. Going on to fourteen, the old school building. This has kind of been a discussion for a little, for a while. Motion to approve entering into a six-month lease agreement with the All Sester Industrial Park in the amount of one thousand, including gas and electric and utility costs. And so...
Yep. So I can send, I didn't know you did, his email. On the back, um, this is, it talks about the cost in terms of the snow and...
Wow, this is property damage.
Yeah.
Yes, the commission that the city of All Sester and/or Thrift Store will continue to handle the water, sewer cleaning, mowing. If the future rule of contact with Mid-American have the utilities, so the I Qs...
Just one thing to mention, something with what's talking about it. I did get a Mid-American bill today, and I talked to Jamie at the bank. When the school split off the utilities, they, I don't think they knew exactly the bill, the new utilities to, so as of right now, the Mid-American bill is in the city's name. Jamie said if, if this agreement is approved, to just bring this down to, you would have everything changed over, and then it would split between us.
Just out of curiosity, what is it?
Well, here's the problem. So the month cost is a hundred and eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. But with this being the first bill, they had, they charged for putting in the new line to go around the property, which was eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-three cents. So the first bill for Mid-American is nine hundred and thirty dollars and eleven cents. And the other thing I wanted to mention too is with researching all the utilities and stuff like this, when the city moved up here as part of the verbal agreement that we all found out about, the water for here has not been getting billed to anybody.
Are you water for everybody?
Nobody's paid for, the bill, the building here has not been, the water bill has not been getting billed to anyone.
This city's innocent, we just paid.
Correct.
Were you guys able to agree as well that this was okay?
We have not made an agreement yet. We were waiting on what you were going to do because if you decide not to, I don't know where that puts us. We would like to have a one-year lease, not a six-month lease, but...
And I just entered the number just to give us a, a number if the council wants to change that, that determination. In the email, he did not talk about a term of the lease. And in discussion with him today, he had asked me if it had been approved, and I told him the council meeting had it tonight. He indicated to me that he doesn't want a formal signed lease. He wanted to, to be a, his words, gentleman's agreement.
The thrift store wants a formal signed lease.
I think we do too.
Yeah, I agree.
We're not in a, a handshake.
We were not, we were not aware of this until that last meeting we had, so we want, we want this in writing.
So, so that six-month is just a number because I, I wanted to have some sort of timeframe, I think you guys can...
Is he aware of that he's ever been charged for water?
I asked him about it, and I was told that the city was just going to take care of that. This is response to it.
Where's the money going to come from? I want, um, because we did budget before we planned the deal.
That's why I think the six-month lease might be a little bit better for us, and at that point, we can, can see how things are going and move it, you know, like extend the lease if we need to. Because that's only really like contractually putting us in for six thousand dollars.
Correct.
What, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
What would you do after six months? Would you, are, are you anticipating moving? I mean, that makes a difference to us, but...
I, I mean, from our last discussion, I think it would give us enough time to really see what the cost of the roof would be, like all the repairs that need to be made to the building if it's even, you know, something that we deem a little bit feasible, which I think, I can speak to the council saying we're leaning a little bit towards not being feasible. But if for some reason, you know, it would come back that it's a lot cheaper or something would happen, we can maybe look at that. It'd also give us time to see, you know, what other options we have, if we could, like we had spoken before, find something that we could do together, a different property, if that's building, something that's moving, just giving us enough time to kind of see what that looks like and where our options would come from. And if we were to build a, a new property, or if we needed to renovate a property, what funding? That I found a couple through the CBDG grant. And like I spoke with you guys, you guys have a lot more nonprofit capabilities in finding money. So if something like that would come to fruition and where we could get that money from to go forward with it, but six months gives us enough time to A, apply for anything that we would need, and for the city just to see where that money could come from before we contractually sign that much away.
Any other questions, discussion? Ready to do it, table it, if you're ready? We need a motion, I guess, or we can discuss it further too. I mean...
I mean, from my perspective, I think we have to make a decision, so. I mean, we really don't have any alternative at the moment, so we need to end...
I mean, we really don't have any alternative at the moment, so we tend to be guessing.
I guess, does anybody have to discuss about the length of it? I would prefer to keep it at six months, but.
I agree.
Then we'll know what electricity, gas, we have some, we have no idea right now.
Based on this month's bill alone?
That's, yeah.
It's, it was a hundred and eight dollars.
Right.
Um, you know, obviously it's not been as cold as typical November.
Tempered.
But it might just be three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
It's a lot less than I had anticipated.
Yeah, me too.
Um. It is, hold on, um, so this bill, this hundred and eight dollars represents ten billing days. According to Mid-American's bill. If I'm reading correctly, it's ten billing days.
So in the coldest month of the year, it was a hundred dollars, so, cause that was ten days.
Ten days.
So in the worst, double that.
And that went from October thirtieth to November ninth, which is when the bills was read.
Yeah, so this winter I would say easily five, six hundred dollars. Um, I'll make a motion to approve entering into a six-month lease agreement with the Elsister Industrial Park in the amount of a thousand dollars, including gas and electric utility costs.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
That we want a written lease, correct?
Yep, I said lease in there.
I, since you're in discussion, I didn't, I only included the gas and electric. I did not include the water sewer and everything because by the time I had found out about that whole piece, the agenda was completed and it was too late to change it, it was already posted. So I don't know if you wanna change that, if the city wants to just, just leave that as it has been, what you guys wanna do with that piece, cause that's the only utility that's not covered in that motion. Well, if I've been cautious, it's a month. I can't tell you that for sure because the meters were not being read.
May I ask a question? Does that include the parts of the building that's going to be torn down? For instance, the pickleball and those areas, the, the, the water access to those? Or is it just the water access to the bathrooms here?
It would have included.
It would have, um, so from the time we moved in, the water for the, since the school vacated this property, the city has not been billing, as far as I can tell in this water system, the city has not been billing anybody for the water sewer.
Okay.
So five-ish years.
Well, I, I meant what, what hookups, what hookups do you have still activated now?
Now it's just this section.
Just this section.
Correct. That was finalized within the last four to five weeks.
Okay.
So now it's just the, the two bathrooms in this hallway and I think that's it for water sewer.
Well, I think we, going forward, we do need to read this meter. You know, there might be way more than we think, you know, and it's kinda looked like maybe we haven't been paying while we have been. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and the problem with it, the meter not having been read, from what I can see, the meter had been read. If there had been a leak within, after the city hookup, we would have never known and tell there was a noticed water problem within the building.
Yeah. Is it someplace we can read it, correct, or no?
Uh, I'd have to get with one on that one. Chris, do you remember where it was, the meter for here is at when you guys went and read it?
I can read it with one though, I thought you said it was in the, in the bathroom?
Oh, like back in the utility room?
Yeah.
Back in the bathrooms or the boiler job? Or the boilers.
I mean, we've been paying it this whole, not paying it, but accepting the cost for it this whole time. I don't really think it needs to go in the lease agreement with us.
I'd just like to know what it is.
Yeah.
Right, for informational purposes, but either way, we're gonna be paying it, I mean, one way or the other, it really would be specified, I guess, at this point.
No, I don't think it needs, but I just think we need to know.
Oh, yeah.
To say, don't say we haven't been doing something, I guess we have.
Well, and just for the leak purposes, I mean, somewhere could be leaking water, we have no idea.
So I guess we'll hear your thoughts.
Yeah, like you said, we put up with, I mean, we've been eating it this long, it's never free, we're, we're never, I mean, there's not a free lunch. You know what I'm saying? And so, I mean, this whole situation is very costly when you start really looking at it. So, just my opinion, you know, we have no choice, of course, but, you know, looking at the budget, a large amount of the community does not understand how tight this city is. You know what I'm saying? I'm just putting that out there, so we just can't keep extending and extended when we just got done with a public hearing needing a three million dollar, needing, not wanting, needing a sewer project. So, but yeah, I think for six months we can just move forward, but from beyond that point, I think it would have to be reviewed again.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
So I'll keep the motion as I read it, somebody can second.
Sure, you did.
Any other discussion?
No.
If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to fifteen clubhouse discussion, Kendra.
Um, I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. I already showed it to Lucas and Darla. I created a like new employee orientation packet for anybody who would start employment at the clubhouse. Um, it just basically goes through like what their expectations are, what, um, their first day of training looks like, what their second day of training looks like, who to contact if something were to go wrong, um, kind of just what that managerial hierarchy looks like. Um, it just basically says they're gonna follow those things and go through with it. Um, that they were given, you know, employee handbook, all of the basic things that you would do at a new job. And at the bottom, they have to sign it, date it, whoever has trained them will sign it and date it and then it will be, um, filed in their employee file. So if there was any, you know, follow-up, any correction, they weren't doing one of those things, we could easily just reference back to it, say, hey, we already discussed this and go from there.
Do you guys have any questions, then?
Great idea.
Yeah. That was all. I just wanted to let you guys know about it as well.
Thank you, Kendra. Any other discussion in regards to that, questions?
Just, just with the clubhouse and I contacted him today. Um, I was at a funeral yesterday in Brickings and a person came to me and said they are going to the Nora store, bringing a bus load down to the Nora store from Soupalls. And they are gonna try to eat at the clubhouse. I said, great. Her concern is that it would take, well, I hope it doesn't take too long. And I said, well, I'll let them know. But in the process of that, I, she did say, you know, I know two or three other bus type situations that are going to that store. So I recommended today to Landon and Kelsey to go talk to him because they get people from everywhere to that, just to help, that'd be a big promotion to the clubhouse. That either a bus comes in, he said, maybe you just have a couple specials, so you probably have enough staff. And let them use that side room and come in and eat. And, but I, I think, so I think that as of this afternoon, they, they are going to come up with something. So, just so you can know.
Awesome, great.
Anything else in regards to the clubhouse? If not, we'll move on to executive session, if needed. Dave says yes, so.
Pursuant to. I'll make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to SDC L one dash two five dash two, parentheses three, legal counsel pending litigation in contractual matters.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We are in seven PM.
Dude, I said.
What's that?
I need to sell it before I start tackling myself.
What time is it going?
Seven PM. We are out of executive session at seven forty-two PM. Moving on, I need a motion to adjourn the council.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the council.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Amen.
Opposed? Motion passed. We are out at seven forty-two PM as well. Seven forty-three.